Recognize recognition of the entire unit. Ms. Una Scott, appreciation for her two point three three years of service with Darlington County, May 2018. She's not here. Then we have Mr. Linda M. Turner, in appreciation, twenty-five years of service with Darlington County. And she's not here. We appreciate what they do for us. And we move on to the public hearing. One A. Sale of two tracts total six point seven one acres, Darlington County, Allen Shover, Incorporated, five dollars. Any one who speaks?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bill Haffield and I'm going to have Mr. Johnson to come in. Just a bit of background, we initiated a tackle campaign back in October with the goal of raising one million dollars to build a new shelter. We are at about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars of making that call. And the land is adjacent to the existing shelters. And it is necessary for us to have the property so that we can eventually construct the new shelter. If not, we'd be glad to answer your questions at the council.
Appreciate your work. Especially being from Florida. Just remember, Florida, darling. County of Florida would be glad to be with you.
We'll call this the best.
Does anyone else wish to speak? If not, I declare pervert here enclosed. Here in point B, ordinance number eighteen national four, in order to make appropriation for ordinary counties, proposed for Darlington County for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty eighteen, and ending June thirty, twenty nineteen, to provide for the expenditures thereof and provide for the payment thereof as amended, second reading. Anyone wish to speak?
Chairman, this is county budget correct.
Yes.
I pointed on the right. Thank you.
And one F. If not, I declare pervert here, ordinance number eighteen national four, closed. One C. Ordinance number eighteen national five, in order to designate the agency of county alcohol and drug abuse planning program to make appropriation pursuant to sections six dash twenty-seven national forty-eight B and twelve dash thirty-three dash two forty-five B and C of the nineteen seventy-six code of laws of South Carolina as invented for Darlington County for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty eighteen, and ending June thirty, twenty nineteen, second reading. Anyone wish to speak? If not, I declare pervert here, ordinance number eighteen oh five, closed. That will call for order, indication, pledge of allegiance.
How long, which I am asking. For this order, another last of all. I want to thank you, Lord, for last night rest and fame of touch and making of love this morning. And Father God be asking you today, Lord, to come and so do you. And ask the blessing of everyone that has a ten today, Lord. And Father God be asking the blessing of one that could ten and will not ten. And Father God be asking you today, Lord, to go with homes, hospitals, where there are sickies, oh Lord. Father, we know that you are one and there is none other. Father, we know that you have more medicine than any heroin or comic than any drug or whatsoever. And Father, we asking you to touch them, oh Lord, give them the full side of getting well. And Father God be asking you today, Lord, wash them. Touch all of them, admit the doctor's credit, the full side of doing the job they're supposed to be doing. And Father God be asking you today to leave us and God us in this name, in your name sake, amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First of all, members, Mr. A. Thomas, Darlington Chamber.
Good evening. I just wanted to give the council a report on what our chamber has been doing and what we've got going on. As most of you know, we had an event entitled "Boats, Ties, and Pearls," which was held on April twenty-first in the backyard of South Pearl. From what I saw and from the reports that I received, delivered to believe everyone in attendance had a wonderful time and we plan on making this an annual event. It was not an event to raise money for the chamber, it was just an event to bring Darlington City, Darlington County, and the surrounding communities together for just fun, food, and camaraderie. Now, this Thursday, on May the tenth, we are having Greater Darlington Chamber of Commerce is hosting Open House Darlington. There will be balloons, banners, realtors, bankers, and hopefully buyers all over the city and county of Darlington. This initiative was the brainchild of Robin Graham, who sits on my board of directors. Beginning at one o'clock on the tenth, we hope to have as many properties open to the public as possible. This has been advertised from Miami to New York, just when this has been out in all of these papers. During the afternoon, there will be an historical tour. At the end of the day, everyone is invited back to the chamber for a reception and a recap of the day. Toyanda Smith, whom most of you know, will be at the chamber doing the book signing of her new book, The Handlist of Unleashing Your Potential. And then at seven that evening, the first concert of the season will begin on Liberty Lane. We just want everyone to see why we love Darlington. Not Darlington, the city, Darlington, community, the county. We have another ribbon cutting on Wednesday the sixteenth at Papa John's, located at Food Bar. Everyone in attendance here, county council, is invited to attend. They will, after ribbon cutting, have free pizza for everyone. And then all day long, there will be a fifty percent off code on our Facebook page for pizza. So you can call and you'll have the code if you go to my Facebook page and you'll be able to get pizza for fifty percent off all day that day. And then on Thursday, it's ladies' day at the Chamber of Commerce. At noon, I'm sorry, men are not invited, it's just for the ladies. At noon, we will have a light lunch, we'll have a chamber member who is a Mirakee representative, and Toyanda Smith will be back, so the ladies can come and visit Ms. Ketter. She'll just do a minute makeover, splitting away samples, and Toyanda will be to discuss her book. And as always, we're in the process of planning Freedom Fest. Now, that brings me to one point, we have a new fireworks company this year. Pyrotechnic, go ahead, sorry, Pyrotechnico is doing it. And I am very sorry that I was not here last night. My father-in-law had a stroke and I had to be gone. Family calls when you have to go. But I understand that there might have been a little confusion about fireworks at Freedom Fest last year. The Chamber of Commerce hired a company to do the fireworks. It was monorail fireworks. And they were supposed to come in, set up the fireworks, prepare them, prep them, load them and lock them, and then shoot them off. We don't touch them, that's what we pay a company to do. And Chief Kavanaugh oversees it. Well, every six hours played getting there, and we knew we had a problem. But they got there and they started setting them off. Well, then the rains came. Sounds like no one in our... Then the rains came and they did come. They continued to set them off, but they didn't cover them. When you do not cover pyrotechnics, you have a problem. Because if they get wet and you decide you're going to shoot them, they will explode, possibly in your face, or explode and injure people who are around you. So Pat told them, when they had a lull in the rain, he radioed me and said, "We have a big issue here. They did not lock them, or load and lock them properly." And they told Pat, "We can shoot a few of these." And Pat said, "You're not going to shoot anything on my watch, because this is just a recipe for disaster." So they said, "That's fine, Lord, we'll back in our supply." So somebody got fireworks and possibly had some injuries. The county of Darlington was a presenting sponsor of ours to Freedom Fest. The money that we got from H-Tax, we put it in the general fund, and the county of Darlington was listed as presenting Freedom Fest, not the fireworks. You presented Freedom Fest. So you were a presenting sponsor, not a fireworks sponsor. So I just wanted to make that clear. We didn't touch the fireworks, we had nothing to do with it. That would be like me trying to drive a big old truck. I'm not capable. I'm not capable of dealing with fireworks this year. So I just wanted to make sure that's clarified, and we do have a new company this year, Pyrotechnico. Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this time I move to amend the agenda to bring forward executive session for discussion of personnel matter.
Second motion. On the paper.
Mr. Chairman, this time I move to go into executive session with members of council, our county attorney, as well as our county administrator for the sake of information regarding personnel matters.
Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that motion without question. I don't see that lit... There you go. It's so dark in here.
All God, on the paper.
All God, please.
Move to accept consent agenda out of six A through sixteen as information.
In discussion? All in favor, say aye. I oppose, I have. Approval of minutes, minutes of public hearing to recommend April the second, twenty eighteen. Emotion? Any second?
Second.
No correction, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, ayes have. Minutes of budget work session, April twenty-third, twenty eighteen. Emotion? Any second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, ayes have. Minutes of Darlington County Municipal Council, County Council Board of Education and Legislative Delegations, April thirty, twenty eighteen.
Move to carry over, second.
Mr. Chairman. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, ayes have. Mr. Kim, move?
Yes, I'll do my best. Ordinance number seventeen dash eighteen, to amend existing agreement concerning governing the Darlington Florence Industrial Park by and between Darlington County, South Carolina, and Florence County, South Carolina, to enlarge the boundaries of the industrial park to include certain property now or to be hereafter owned and or operated by a company identified to the time being as Project Days located in Darlington County, South Carolina, and authorizing other related matters as amended, this is third reading, I so agree.
Good second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have.
Eight B. Ordinance number eighteen dash zero three, an ordinance calling for a referendum to authorize the South County Department of Revenue to issue temporary permits in the county of Darlington to allow for the possession, sale, and consumption of alcoholic beverages by the drink, provided by non-profit organizations and business establishments authorized to license for consumption on premises, sales, and to allow the sale of beer and wine at permitted off premises location without regard to the days or hours of sales. Third reading.
Some move? Any second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I got a question. We're going to issue temporary permits?
No, this is the way that the state requires you to give permission, this language specifically from state law, to give permission to DOR to issue temporary permits. Once they have that permission, they can then issue annual permits for the sale of area wine on Sunday by businesses within the unincorporated area of the county. It can already be done within the incorporated limits of Darlington and Marston.
The business to put on the referendum?
Yeah, I'm sorry, this is to put on the referendum, so that the votes can vote whether they want to make the...
Put due to the A R.
But the temporary permit thing does confuse a number of people, but that language is specifically called according to state law, you know.
Anyone else? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, ayes have.
Eight C. Ordinance number eighteen dash O for, in order to make appropriations for ordinary county purposes for Darlington County for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty eighteen, and ending June thirtieth, twenty nineteen, to provide for the expenditures thereof and to provide for revenues for the payment thereof, as amended, second reading.
Any second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. All opposed, ayes have. Ordinance number eighteen national five, in order to designate the agency of county alcohol and drug abuse planning program to make appropriation pursuant to sections six twenty-seven dash forty B and twelve dash thirty-three, two forty-five B and C of the nineteen seventy-six code of laws of South Carolina as invented for Darlington County for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty eighteen, and ending June thirty, twenty nineteen, second reading.
Any motion?
Move to approve ordinance number eighteen dash zero five.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, ayes have.
Item eighteen, ordinance number eighteen dash zero six, in ordinance to amend Darlington County Code for Ordinances, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Two, County Council, Section Two, Dash Thirty-One, compensation of council members and officers, subjects and agencies established, to increase the compensation of council members and officers and to establish the effective date of this ordinance, first reading, no action taken.
Eight D. Ordinance number eighteen dash one seven, to impose a one percent sale tax and use tax subject to a representative of the county, in pursuit of the Capital Product Sales Act, to define the tribe president, designate the product for which the procedure of the tax may be used, to provide a maximum pound for which the tax may be imposed, to provide a cause of the positive improvement from the percentage of the tax, to provide a cannibal referendum and to provide the contents of the product pushed to such referendum, to override the referendum on insurance or not, exceeding twenty-five dollars. General obligation borne of Darlington County to provide for the conduct of such referendum, to provide for the legislature of the tax, to provide for the previous possible tax, and to provide for those matters related to health, emergency, and accident.
Resolution, resolution number six eighty-nine, GMS week proclamation, designated the week of May the twenty-third, twenty-sixth, twenty eighteen, as a urgency medical service week.
Some move? Second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed. I have. Leader reports. None of the other items. Appointments of boards, commissions, committees, where they are required, courtesy, same for boys, to carry over for me.
Mr. Evans? Carry over, please.
Mr. Evans? Mr. Goode?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
My point, I need to make an adjustment on my parts of recreation committee. The one that I appointed last year failed to appear in any of the meetings, I think. I talked to Parker Al, local attorney with a young child of four years old who played tee ball, and he's willing to go on that committee and be present for that meeting, so I'll move Edward Al to remain in charge.
Second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, ayes have.
Thank you.
Upon to the courthouse destruction advisory committee, physical disabled representative, county chairperson.
Not chairperson.
Yes.
I move to remove this from the agenda until after the referendum.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, ayes have. Eleven C, appointment to PD work force development.
They have, they've got a request of appointment in here. They're requesting that you reappoint this...
Eleven E?
No, no, that will actually request you reappoint this evidence.
All in favor, I need to change the...
All in favor of appointing, Mr. Dale Evans?
Aye.
Ayes have. Agreement with Michael Baker International Providing Detail Sony and Social Work for Refinishing the Program of Darlington County Courthouse Administration Building, fifty-two thousand, two seventy-six.
Move the approval?
Second.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I ask a further question?
Yes.
Administrator, where is the money going to be?
Coming from the current courthouse construction, we've got one point three left in that, so we're playing...
I've got a question. Will this address the scheduling conflicts and logistics of moving offices and where we're going to?
No, this one and the next one. The next one addresses this building only, what it will take to come to code standard, just to remodel this building. This one that you're looking on now addresses a couple of different things, you look at the scope of it. It asks, what would it, also based on the information from the next one, it asks, what would it take to incorporate everything in this building? The answer to that is going to be, it has to be expanded, there's no doubt of that. And it will address what it would take to expand this building. It also addressed, can you program the space that has already been realized as needed, be put into a building in the footprint just behind us here of thirty to thirty-three thousand square foot? Then it will address, can you put the rest of the programming for space back in this, back in this building with the renovations? All of that's going to be necessary before you can really make any informed decision of, can we fit everything in the thirty-three thousand square foot building? We have to go and restore building there. And can we put, remodel this building appropriately and remain with the administration of this business?
But it will not address the legislative service of what happens if probate has to move out for a period of time. It will not address any of those questions.
It may slightly hint to the fact that if you choose the new building, this building would then have a couple of floors free and you can move them around in this building, but exactly how that's going to happen? No, I don't, I don't think any of the studies are going to address that unless you ask them, and I don't think, quite honestly, I wouldn't want them to tell us how we're going to move everything there, other than, we're going to build, remodel, if you do this building, you can remodel two floors, put the people that are going there, and everybody has to go on those two floors for a while, remodel the other floors and move around. It will give you part of what you're asking for, it's not to give you a map and say this is...
I was going to ask him forward, I was going to make it, let me play it out here of what it is.
From that information, it makes it easier for you to look at and say, well, build a new building, it makes it feasible to remodel this building for the remainder of the offices that will stay in this building by this process. Well, the new building, we're taking up this... On the judicial, that's right. And then by moving that out, you can remodel this building with occupancy here and wherever. So it will look at remodeling the faces when we do it.
Any others? No? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, ayes have. Eleven E, agreement with Michael Baker International Pursuitable Report for Proposed Renovation of the existing Darlington County Courthouse Administration Building, remove.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, ayes have. Sale of two tracts total six point seven one acres, Darlington County, Allen Shover, five dollars. Some move? Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, ayes have. Eleven G, accommodation tax advisory committee, FY eighteen nineteen funded, recommend recommendation page one eighty-eight.
Move the approval committee recommendation. Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the committee's recommendation. I would like to delete the Marston Community Center to eighty-five hundred, take fifteen hundred of that, give it to the Butler Heritage Foundation, and divide the remainder between the Marta Egg Strambles, the Palco Islands, Weekpad Festival, and Society Hill Catfish Festival.
Second motion. Any discussion?
Yeah, I oppose. I'm opposed because we've chosen a committee, recall, we had difficulty getting someone to serve on that, and we got a person to come in. The asset that needs committee to carry for ten years, or basically accommodation tax is mainly based on validation of hotel bookings. Some variations in that, I understand that, but if we go down the path of it sells that and then start pulling away from projects that, that, projects are awarded based on those who validate hotels. I'm not saying some of these others aren't good projects, but the difference for a person coming to a hotel and spending three days in town versus somebody moving in for two hours. moving in for two hours, and that. So, the committee has served to try to validate the best we can, whereas most money they spend which generates the most revenue for the county. So, I would caution against going against the committee because there's, people spend a lot of time, if we start going against our partners, or we don't have volunteer for the committee, then we've got a bigger problem. It's already a problem because money's been cut, but now we're running around twelve thousand, basically a third of the funds. I think there's a danger of precedent by going against the committee, and then I think it opens up a bigger discussion about how taxes are generated, particularly with P S L tax.
Mr. Chairman?
I agree with you.
Mr. Bryan?
We have, we have a committee that is designated to do this and suggest what we do, what's the only hazard if they don't, we don't trust them, they won't do the correct process.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
As far as someone who is references to rural area, looking at this, Harpsville Center Theater is its own taxing entity. The city has spent a million dollars, or is going to spend a million dollars on a water park. The rest of the accommodation tax dollars were going to Harpsville for yoga fest and some other things, completely leaving out Darlington, Lamar, and Society Hill. Now, I don't have, no one I represent is on this list to start with, but if you're worried about a dangerous precedent, when you take every dime of the accommodation tax and send it to one municipality, rather than saying that no one from Lamar, no one from Society Hill, no one from Darlington is worthy of accommodation tax? To me, that is a dangerous precedent, not funding something that's already funded by the city and its own taxing entity.
I don't think that's, the point being is that these are based off of who's bringing in most revenues from the county. And if we could fund those, as I said, hospitality, we did talk about that last year, but the other, I think we talked about twenty-five hundred dollars coming out of hospitality to fund those stuff. But you've got, you've got some events that are, have an economic impact that have been not, that you're going to take. For somebody to come in, if, and not, uh, go well, and there is economic impact, this part's been in your county, and the Department of Tourism has a factor, so they base money for seven times before it leaves the county. So somebody spent a thousand dollars for seven thousand dollars, so some of these, so I was having these meetings, and all their request was to validate who's coming in, it wasn't that the projects weren't worthy, but it was a determination of who's generating the most people coming in to these hotels. But, we did talk about using the hospitality funds to fund those festivals, it did not validate. But honestly, if everybody that's not, everybody has an option to validate how many people are bringing in to this.
Well, the Center Theaters, if it is that successful, why does it need to take the money from Lamar and Society Hill, which is, both of them are small and funding sources that they have are limited? The Center Theater's been, and if you take into, if you take in Society Hill, when you go up to Henry's Place, those people who've stayed there, who've stayed multiple days, who've spent thousands of dollars, that's not considered inside of this. And the same way with the Catfish Festival, the number of people who come in and stay there is, is not being considered. How many people come in for Lamar?
They're asked every year to validate, and if you're asking money, that's the committee that's said if you bring them, if you plan them, all they're asking is to validate.
How are you validating the Center Theater for eighty-five hundred dollars when they have daily shows? Those people are not spending the night?
Well, no, they are, it's the general with the hotel, validating the people to hotels. They ask them, if you're here for the festival, if you've had, et cetera, they're talking about it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a little opinion to that. Um, I partly agree with Mr. Flowers and the ideology, we, we've all been different, but this is one of their few cases, I do agree with him. And, uh, because I'm very cautious about heritage, I mean, I know that most of the council members, and one of the things that we do know that the folks in heritage found and share about heritage is, is we allow the money into Harpsville. And, uh, to add some room to it, I would like to see the proposal made by Mr. Flowers, if all the money is, if all the data is, uh, money that, uh, he has spoken about would go to heritage, but I do think that it's important that we name record of heritage does contribute quite a bit with regard to the hospitality, uh, uh, revenues, the question about that, and, uh, we, and that's one of the, the, the more older, the older festivals that, um, recognize the historical contributions in education and culture in Darlington County, um, and it's African-American heritage. And, uh, I, 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 I don't support that, I do support giving more money to heritage anywhere. Thank you.
Mr. Stevens, any reason I said the fifteen hundred, they were recommended twenty-five hundred, they were requested four thousand, that would bring them up to whatever they were requesting about?
But, uh, it's not only going to, to heritage, they could be split between Egg Strambles, Catfish Festival, New Beacon Raisers, and, uh, Sweet Potato Festival.
Yeah, I understand.
You can split it between all of them, not just one.
I'm just cautious.
Mr. Chairman, I've sat in ten years of those meetings and not one council person attended any of the meetings, except for Lynn Johnson, as you have. They asked specifically, can you just validate what you're trying to determine, what you're saying? I have one, one more that said they could revitalize people's hotels in Darn County, it's a little bit of a stretch, it's not quite being ruled. It wasn't that the, the projects aren't worthy, it's a question, how do you validate? That if you've asked the committee to make a decision based on the best value, they're, again, they're not, they're not saying either of these projects aren't worthwhile, and that was based on hospitality, I'm not saying don't give money, but it's diverted back to hospitality. There's only twenty-five thousand dollars in, in the accommodation taxes.
But yoga and healing arts festivals, they justified, they had, I, I don't, I don't intend to, to be like I did before. Well, we, and council members have always been discouraged from attending the meetings so that they have open discussions without council's influence in making the recommendations. And in previous years, we have taken their recommendations, but when you take every dollar of it and send it to one municipality and completely leave out, well, the other three municipalities who have long-term successful festivals.
What's the value?
What's the value?
I mean, quantify.
Well, let's quantify this then, all those years we had Reno Fest, we threw thousands and thousands of dollars at it, it was so successful, it gets folded. And then they went, and then Center Theater, who had an opportunity last year.
Folks, the person that headed it, it wanted to.
No, they called it because it was a.
Chairman? Proper adage, when a speaker is speaking for the other, be quiet, and when you request to speak, you ask the chairman for permission.
I apologize, Mr. Stevens. Rather he didn't, well, I would just make my last point, Chairman, that this becomes a point of what we consider to be tourism, that we exclude tourism from any other discussions of money, self-tax, so this is a question of tourism. Mr. Stevens, the council board.
Call a question?
Uh, let's go to two.
Roll call.
Roll call.
You begin with the, this is on the amendment.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, uh, please. Uh.
I'm.
Isaiah.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a statement for your manager, and, 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 partly because perhaps my, my esteemed colleague is not aware of this, but many of the hospitality meetings, I do know personally, Dr. Kevy has attended those meetings because he's our director. I do know personally that the former, Mr. Leonard Lewis, who had the powers to be director of Heritage Foundation, attended those meetings. There were several, um, of people who, who are considered the African-American community and, 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 and county, not just arts field, that have attended.
I'm a member of the, he was a, I was a councilor.
They've been, they've been at those meetings.
Now, I spoke to you as amended. Uh. So, then.
We're, we're voting on the amendment, to move the change on Mr. Lewis.
We're laying on that one.
Oh, okay, I, I suppose, uh, Mr. Leonard is, uh, very convenient. So, hold it down.
Mr. Lewis?
And we need to clarify, to make sure that she has this correct. You moved, you struck all funding for the Harpsville Community Center Theater.
Yes, sir.
Moved fifteen hundred dollars into Butler Heritage to bring in four thousand.
Yes, sir.
And then you split the remaining seven thousand between Lamar, Egg Strambles, Pilot Club, Sweet Potato Festival, Darlington, and Society Hill Catfish Festival.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that was a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
He did not, you didn't include that on the motion.
No, sir, I did not include the, the vision to be.
So, the remaining seven will be split in third between those three community festivals.
Mr. Chairman, can I clarify? I, I voted no in this because I think we as a council should, should let these committees tell us, because they do their due diligence and perceive where the accommodations money should be spent might be solely on what they're asked to do, specifically on the number of beds being taken up in our county. That's what their task to do, therefore, that we have to, in my opinion, they put the time in to figure out what it is, so we should, I have nothing against the Butler Heritage Foundation or the Catfish Festival or the Egg Strambles, those are all great things, but this committee didn't, they didn't put beds, people in beds, so therefore, you know, I thought that's what accommodation taxes was, the accommodation fund was used for. Now, I certainly can differ, if it maybe been on that one, but that's just fine, that's what I'm, what I'm.
All right, move on. Purchased a new old block engine for nineteen ninety-six Sterling LTE nine-five-hundred truck, twenty thirty-one for road to bridge. Remember, sir. Second.
Second.
In discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose Isaiah. Bid award for remodeling the Harpsville Memorial Library, eighteen thousand forty-eight dollars. Remove. Second. In discussion? All in favor say aye. Oppose Isaiah. Bid award for emergency dispatch protocol system, two hundred sixty-seven thousand eight thirty-five priority dispatch.
Move to accept bid award for emergency dispatch.
Move second. Second. In discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like an explanation for the motion to be adjourned.
Certainly, well, emergency dispatch system is a software system that will allow, for primary purpose of this, is to put emergency medical dispatch in place, which is their key selling item. The surrounding counties have pre-arrival emergency medical dispatch, where in certain life-threatening situations, they provide pre-arrival instructions such as CPR, respiratory breathing, hemorrhagic bleeding. We currently don't do that in Darlington. Um, actually worked on this years ago, in the formal position, we just never quite got to it. We have a little, approximately two million dollar fund balance in emergency telephone, which is one of the islands that emergency telephone funds can be used for. Um, that two, two million dollar fund balance is approximately, actually a four hundred percent fund balance, extremely high, um, but it's very limited on what you can use this for. You can't go buy radios for EMS, radios for sheriff, for that type of thing. Uh, but this is for software being used inside the center. We'll also get approximately eighty thousand dollars back from the state as part of the incentive program that's been in place for years for, um, centers to do this. Now, there is a emergency police dispatch component of this, an emergency fire dispatch component of this, that the fire service and law enforcement services can choose to put specific protocols in place to help dispatchers dispatch, receive the information that they want to get every time and send to their officer or to their responding fire department every time. Uh, but the primary cost and motivation here is the pre-arrival emergency medical dispatch instruction.
I have a question. If you don't know, many other days I was out riding Florence and Darlington and saw a fellow walking with the traffic, uh, on US fifty-two, and he looked like he might have been a little degraded, this was in the middle of the day. I started to call nine-one-one. If I'd called nine-one-one on my cell phone, who would I have gotten?
According to which tower you're at and where you're located, what you're talking about between the two, you are likely to get Florence County, Florence County nine-one-one. They'll find out where you are, and they would transfer the call. Now, in the case of what I'm talking about specifically as one of the primary motivating factors here, if you had a medical emergency, they would not drop you, if the, this same system that we're looking to purchase told them to give pre-arrival instructions, they would not have dropped you, they would give you those pre-arrival instructions and dispatch, and rolled the remaining part of the call over to our dispatch center, because our dispatch center is not capable of doing that at this time.
Okay, so.
But we can.
This was literally in Florence County, so more likely Florence nine-one-one would have, one would have picked it up based on probably the tower within Florence County. All right? So, then, does our nine-one-one system let us know where a cell phone is making that call?
You can certainly find out what tower it's from, I was going to mention while you were talking, I was thinking to tell you that in the future, when they're able to locate that cell phone very quickly, and that's one of the functions that they're doing with the nine-one-one, they'll be able to locate where it's located, and then with geomapping, it would say, this call is coming from inside Darlington County, routed to the Darlington County nine-one-one center, not to the Florence County nine-one-one center, even though I'm peening off of the Florence tower located in Florence County. But we're not quite that far along, but not us. Technology's there, but it hasn't been put in place just yet. But as we move further and further into four G and LTE service, uh, more digital, complete coverage all the time, and more sophisticated software, it will be able to do that. It can be done, um, you can pay for extra outside software that might do that now, but it's not automatic for the phone to use floors at this time. It will be assured.
So, even though my cell phone has a Florence number, if I'm in Darlington County, it's going to go to Darlington now.
Hopefully one day soon.
Sure.
Hopefully one day soon, yes, the mapping should be down to that level. Sheila, have you heard, have you heard anything else about that? They were talking about that, I was two years ago, where the cell phone tower was mapped to the exact location in Geocod.
It, it's due in ninety-nine.
But they're not, they're not making it route that way though just yet, or not routing for sure.
But, if he's in Darlington County, even though he has a phone cell number, it's still going to pick up in Darlington County.
It, it should, it doesn't, their routing too isn't necessary.
This is a check.
I mean, I just don't want to play with nine-one-one like some of my clients, and call y'all all the time, so that's why I'm asking these questions, so, that I don't call nine-one-one and say, I'm just checking this out. They come, this guy comes to arrest me.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not mistaken, it was two years ago, we, we, we addressed this sw-. Mr. Chairman, I'm not mistaken. It was two years ago. We addressed this. We went up the assumption around. Do you recall that this coming up? I'm not mistaken. This came up.
It must have come across film.
Yes, it was before. It was before. I think it was before. I know it was a few times. But at that point, you were looking at of that other system that we.
It may have come up at that time, but it never got put in place that time. It never got purchased.
But this, this is to put it into.
This is the purchase. This is the only responsible bidder for requests for proposals to provide a specific level of dispatch capability.
Mr. Chairman, I, since I've been on the council, and I've heard this, it repeats in some areas where the roads are so bad that they don't even go down and get, you know, emergency situations. So, are we working on that? I know we're talking about purchasing.
That would be something totally separate, but let me, let me ask now. And Sheriff, if you speak up, have y'all had any roads in the emergency service and fire service and law enforcement that you would not go down to this point? Now, we certainly send out letters for private roads getting disrepair to warn them that they could get to that condition, but since, I know what happened, although you were in place back then, out on Billy Farrell, we did have to tell them that if we could not get a truck down there, that was years ago, and they took care of it. But we certainly do send out letters. Nine-one-one just addresses, sends out letters when they find out that private roads are such disrepair, that it is a possible problem. But I'm pretty sure, I'm confident, I'm not pretty sure, I'm confident, that every effort would be to go get someone that they need to go get, whether it be the sheriff sending his big win from detection or the fire department or EMS going in and backing the pickup truck they had to. They're going to go in. But certainly when people get those letters that you've heard and talked about, they get scared, but quite honestly, that's what the letter is for, to tell them that their privately owned or maintained road is in extreme disrepair and it needs to be addressed. And that's the purpose of the papers.
I'm glad you.
Yes, sir.
I was going to know, are we working on that?
I'll take a vote. I oppose. I have. Vote to transfer of West Purge Mobile Mobile Radio to Sheriff's Office, fifty thousand, seven thirty-nine, fifty-six. I move for approval of vote transfer.
In discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, I have.
Mr. Chairman, I've done.
Just to give those things.
Yes.
Eleven A, a court grant for Lamar Dixie concession, probably twenty-three thousand six sixteen, fifty-six.
Move for approval of the pardon grant for Lamar Dixie concession.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, I have. Mr. Barry Bubbe.
Ladies and council, I just have one presentation for you. The Stephen, Mr. Stevens with the executive director of the South Carolina Aeronautics Commission, he would like to share with you some information concerning airports, the economic impact of airports. And I thought this would be an opportunity to have him to do that. Normally, we would have PowerPoint, but due to our dislocation, which I will mention while we dislocate you here, once he's had an opportunity to do this presentation. So, each of you should have a PowerPoint presentation in front of you. Prepare.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask time? And I, the new president, I just want to mention.
I know that's very, have they seen the same presentation that Airport Commission?
Yes, Sheriff, they have. Always.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and council, thank you very much for the time this evening. Mr. Barry, thank you for allowing me to step in and take some of your time, your reporting tonight. Couple of things that I'd like to share with you tonight are specifically about your airport, also about the state, the system of airports that we have here in South Carolina. Each one of them plays a role in our system. Each airport, each county, actually, there are two counties, seventy-fourty-six, that don't have airports. And they would love to have, you to have. So, I wanted to tell you a little bit tonight about what you have, about the value of that airport to your community. And I'll say, Mr. Barry, in fact, here, your airport manager does a good job. He communicates often with us at the state about the airport, about the needs, also the FAA, he and his consultant that he's got that helps him make decisions, planning, investments, dollars for keeping the airport up to certain standards. He does a good job. Also have with me tonight, Mr. Chris Batte. Chris is your district seven representative to the South Carolina Aeronautics Commission. We have, you know, seven congressional districts in South Carolina. Now, we have seven members of the council and chairman, one of our governors, I have two, and eight member commission. And they, like you, make decisions related to airports and airport improvements across the state and province that we have and dollars that we're able to share with you. So, tonight, I wanted to share with you some of what we've done in the past eighteen months. Over the past eighteen months, we look at these, again, the system of airports, did a system plan and an economic impact study. So, the, again, the forty-six counties that we looked at, we studied fifty-seven airports. There are fifty-seven airports in South Carolina that are publicly owned, relatively used airports. Six of those are commercial service. You have one right next door to you in Florence County. We looked at the ability of the airport's system to meet the needs of the local communities and to meet their own objectives for the study that we defined. Then we compared annual estimated economic impact contribution at each one of those facilities. So, I'm on this economic impact section here, if you're following along, and I'll give you some figures along the way, where I'm at. How we did this, we looked at employment, the payroll for that, the expenditures that, the spending, I should say, that takes place in and through your airport. So, Mr. Brown mentioned a little bit ago about the multiplier effect of people that coming into the community spend dollars. You know, they don't just spend it at the airport. They're coming in the state hotels, they buy goods and services while they're here, and they spend dollars while they're here. So, we looked at the spending and then ultimately we came out with a total annual economic output for both direct expenditures at the airport and those that come through your airport. The activity centers that we looked at, and I'm on this second page, this page here with the little buckets on the side of it. We looked at airport management, airport tenants, capital investments that are made, commercial and general aviation visitors and dollars that are expended as they came and went through our physical airports. Again, we look at direct impacts, indirect impacts, which for the indirect impacts, I want to say that a lot of times people question the validity and the accuracy of those numbers that are considered indirect impacts because there's a, there's a model and there's a methodology that's used often to estimate those impacts. We use what's called N-Plan, which is a widely known, widely used across the country model to help us estimate some of those impacts on the indirect or reduced. Ultimately, those with the direct and indirect gives are total impacts. For South Carolina, some of the things I want to highlight, I'll start at the top and then kind of work my way down with Darlington County. We have a hundred and twenty-two, over a hundred and twenty-two thousand people that are employed at our airports or jobs that are supported through our airports. We have a payroll of those hundred and twenty-two thousand jobs of four-point-eight billion dollars. And we are spending eleven and a half billion, ultimately giving us sixteen-point-three billion dollars in an annual economic impact, again, in and through our airports, our fifty-seven publicly owned, publicly owned, publicly used airports. Part of my responsibility for the state is to communicate the needs of each respective airport. So, let's talk about Darlington County's airport. So, if you have needs, infrastructure needs, Barry does what he does with the FAA to secure funnel dollars. He does what he does with me, to save, to secure state dollars. And then he comes to you all and asks often for dollars to support his efforts out there at the airport as well as the infrastructure through his name. But as I go to the state legislature and I talk about the state portion of those dollars, of those infrastructure needs, I had to be able to tell those senators and those house members what it is we do with the dollars, what they're going for in our county and elsewhere, how we spend them. And one of the things that I often run into, I'm sure Barry runs into this as he's talking to you all about his needs as well, you know, Barry, we're putting in these dollars here to, to the airports, for the airport. What do we get back? What's the return on investment? You know, how do we budget the dollars we're getting spent wisely? But part of the study of that sixteen-point-three billion dollars in the state, we identified six hundred, almost nearly six hundred and fifty-seven million of that are directly related with taxable events. So, there might be taxes, multiple taxes under our stuff, there might be state taxes, sales taxes, but taxable events, six hundred and fifty-seven million. Well, I'll tell you, I don't deal with six hundred and fifty-seven million dollars budgeted here in state dollars that go after our airports. I deal with about five million dollars. So, we're far, far away from the revenue that goes in and what actually goes back out to our local airports. Now, on the Darlington County page, the economic impact page here, Darlington County, we estimated that there were thirty-four total jobs either at the airport, again, or supported through the airport. So, airport management, obviously, you have Barry. You have full-time, part-time, people that help to take care of facilities out there. You have others that are related to the airports and part of your administrator's responsibility. He has some, some part of the oversight of the airport. You have other piece of finance people, grants people that probably, their job, their salaries, in some way, supported by the work that they do before the airport. You have tenants that are based out here. There's pilots, there's mechanics, there's those that, that have a business out there. You know, Snow Coast is one that's there, obviously employs people to fly those aircrafts. So, those people are considered as well in the employment numbers. You have capital investments that are made at that airport. So, as we repay payments, as we do other projects, the people that you hire to do those projects, those jobs are in parts supported by those expenditures. Then you have the visitor spending aspect as well. And those, you know, they come into Darlington County, they spend money elsewhere. So, again, part of those monies, are that model that we use, estimated jobs. We estimated thirty-four jobs are supported through your airport. Of those jobs, that represents nearly one and a half, little over one and a half million dollars in payroll. And you have two-point-nine in annual spending, annually, two-point-nine million, resulting in four and a half million dollars annually to the economic impact of your local airport. And I know you're not spending that kind of money each year to support the airport. I'll talk to that to that point differently. So, we looked at the system plan as well. Again, we looked at all four airports. And one of the things that we did is we had to basically do inventory of what we have. We started with the inventory. We looked at the roles and responsibilities of the airports have. We looked at the forecast of the traffic that are going to come and go from those airports in the future. We evaluated those airports and that forecast. We looked at airport roles. Within those roles, each role has their objective to meet that, to be in that role or to meet that role. Those objectives, sometimes we identify deficiencies, and sometimes we identify areas where the county, the county airport mapped those roles. But if there were deficiencies, we had to do some estimating of cost to get those roles taken care of. And then ultimately, we came up with a plan for fifty-seven airports across the state of South Carolina. We looked at infrastructure, current infrastructure, as we look at the roles of the airports, predict what they get from the main market area characteristics, gaps and redundancies that we might have. I'll just speak to one here in Darlington County. You know, you've got two airports in the county. Darlington County, Hartsfield, owned by the city of Hartsfield, Darlington, obviously owned by Darlington County, and you all have to support that financially. We looked at the FAA roles that they've established in their airport identification. So, now, looking at this page here, you can see the different roles that each airport has. And the one thing I want to show you, in your area of South Carolina, Darlington is what's called a corporate business. That's our second tier, second from the top. So, you've got your commercial airports at the top. Then you've got your business corporate airports. Then you've got your business recreation, and then recreation sold at the bottom. You guys are in the second tier, so you support, obviously, business and corporate type flying. Also, you have recreation, you guys out there doing your thing. But as you look at your region of South Carolina, you look at those airports around you, and most of them around you are below where you are at in the role in which you play in our system of airports in South Carolina. Moving on to the roles defined, I'm not going to get into the people, but again, you're in that second column, S D two is what you are. And you can see all the different, all the different roles that are there, those benchmarks that we looked at for you to be in that role, you can see exactly which ones we looked at in the study. And again, I'm not going to get into that. Moving on to what we call report cards for each airport. And these are things identified, and we look at each airport, we identify, again, those roles, the objectives to meet those roles. And we look at your airport to see how you did. And if you look, this is something I'm going to applaud you all on. And I know it's not something that just happened overnight. This has happened for years for taking care of your airport. I want to say thank you. But as you look at all of these objectives under scorecard, under report card here, and you look at the compliance column, you're a yes on everything except for one. And that one is something that all of our airports face. So, don't, don't say, you know, we're missing Lamar because you're not doing a great job. That one is just trees that have to grow in, in approach of them in an airport. And that's going to happen. That's going to happen over and over. Again, we've got programs in the state of South Carolina at the Aeronautics Commission where we offer for Barry in Darlington County to take care of maintenance of your airport. If we provide you a maintenance grant, basically, we'll say, we're going to pay seventy-five percent of those costs to do that maintenance site. You in turn have to pay four-five percent. If we help you get a federal grant, they're going to pay, the FAA is going to pay ninety percent of those total project costs. I'll pay five. You guys will pay five. So, as you again, move back to that report card, couple of things that we looked at, obviously, are you meeting the objectives? Yes, you are. I can show you that. But then we looked at, okay, well, where are we going over the next five years? What capital investments are needed? We did a payment maintenance study a few years ago, a couple of years ago, and we identified some pieces of payment at the Darlington County Airport that obviously needs some attention. But I'll say this, your airport manager, his consulting firm that he, that he works with often, they've already identified those as well from their five-year capital investment plan that they give with the FAA to start the process of seeking that ninety percent. But over the next five years, you've got just under nine million dollars identified as some capital investment needed on your payments out there at the airport. So, the question I often ask, and I'm sure you all have probably talked to us in the past, is airport ownership worth the investment? You know, for the dollars that we spend at a county that may, may be at times hard pressed to decide how a dollar are spent. For the dollars that we spend, are we getting the return on investment that we like to see out of our airport? And again, I want to recap some things here. I told you, your estimated annual economic impact is more than a plenty of dollars. That does not include your local property tax. So, as you look at aircraft owners, aircraft that are owned by people, you know, you can assess the property tax on that. Believe you all, it's four percent, right? There you go. So, you are, as low as you can build in the state, which means that you are going to be one of the ones that would be first to get a new customer. Because you had, there are buildings in the state that are either at six percent or ten and a half percent on their subsidy or four, so it's different. But those dollars that are assessed on those property taxes are not included in this four and a half million dollars. The five-year study that we looked at identified almost nine million dollars in need over the next five years for capital investment. If you buy that out over five, you've got one-point-seven-eight-eight million dollars a year average to meet those goals that we identified in the system plan and that your airport has already put on that capital improvement plan, which I assume requires a approval by council, your airport. But you look at return on investments. So, is it worth the investment to do this? If you take the, the four and a half million economic impact and run the formula based on the average of annual need, you come out with a hundred and fifty-three point four-three percent return on investment. Again, not counting the multiple property taxes that are being paid. So, that's going to look like that, that's going to look like that if you're going to make it look even better. Also, that return on investment just considers that Darlington County would pay that four-point-eight-point-nine million dollars to make those capital improvements over the next five years. And we know that's not, that's not going to be the case. You're going to see ninety percent federal out, five percent from the state. So, your hundred and fifty-three percent return on investment is going to grow exponentially. And it does not include the cost of overhead, various costs, other staff members' costs that has to go to the airport. Those aren't included, so. But they're probably far less than what your return on investment is. So, question again is, how does Darlington County continue to support? So question again is, how, how does Darlington County continue to support the airport, continue to increase that return on investment? And I would say, keep doing what you're doing, support Barry, let him go after federal grant funds, let him go after state funds, the dollar that he gets, look, from the FAA or from the state is a dollar that you don't need to contribute to your airport. Continue to grow the airport through attracting customers, try to grow businesses out there, those that utilize airports, not just that fly into and out of, but those that like to stay at your airport, those that like its services at your airport, maintenance services, they buy fuel, they in turn spend money in the county outside of those airport fences. So again, you all are doing a great job, I appreciate the support that you have given your airport has, your team, I want to let, Commissioner Pathay, let's say, she say a couple of words with us, all right, and we'll answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Because the airport is very important, has always been important, he is county councilman in terms of this economic impact, but you said that we were in that second tier of corporate business, does that include, we know that Sunoco is, you know, makes up part of that, 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 that study?
Yes, sir.
But does that also include that NASCAR as a business or as a tourism, because you know, we have our Southern 500, and we have quite a few NASCAR, NASCAR people that utilize our, our airport, no question about that. Is NASCAR in the corporate business here, or is it in the tourism here?
As we look at the numbers that are related to your NASCAR, those visitors that come to Darlington County through that NASCAR event, those are included in your visitor spending in your economic impact report. What you're looking at here in the SC two is just minimum standards, basically, for airports to be in that category, and these are, these are, these are hard pavements, you know, pavement, SC two is a five thousand, minimum five thousand foot run, when you're at fifty-five hundred feet, it's minimum seventy-five feet wide, you're at a hundred, so you're, you're already above that minimum standard. Again, these are, these are more of a capital investment requirement for tooling and pavements and designing standards, and that's why you're in that SC two category. It's really not related to Sunoco being at the airport, but Sunoco's involved in the airport and the race track near Darlington County, those are considered in your, Sunoco, your jobs numbers and your payroll numbers and your visitor capital investments that they might make, so they built those hangers out there, that was considered in the capital investment side. Your visitors that come to the races are considered in the visitor numbers.
Thank you.
I'm just going to take a minute, because I can't top that. I'm Chris Pathay, and I have recently been appointed as a commissioner of the Central Division, and I live in Myrtle Beach for the last thirty years, I'm born and raised in L.A., so I'm proud of you. And so I told, I told Barry, because this is Bobby's, I hope you'll feel free to call me if you have concerns or thoughts or questions you've got that need to be put through the commission, because I'm happy to, happy to take your concerns there and try to address them. I will reiterate that the, those federal, what I have learned from the short time I've been on this commission is those federal dollars are, that's an excellent return on investment, and you talk about all these airports that need to make improvements, and they come to the local government and ask for five percent, and the commission kicks in five percent, the federal government kicks in ninety percent, you just tell me it's hard to beat that, so sometimes it is hard, hard to scrape up some of those dollars, you got an asset like that in your community. He said NASCAR will blend it in, there is no pressure, but the Southern 500 leave it out there, you know what I'm saying, because there are a lot of airports that come in that are insured, and so, you know, thank you, Chris Pathay, if you mean it, if you feel free to call me.
I just have two other things to mention. One, I'm sorry, I want to, uh, I have a comment I'd like to make before you all leave the show. Oh, I had a pleasure, my wife and I had a pleasure going to the airshow in Myrtle Beach week before last, that was an awesome event, I don't know what y'all played any part in it, but I would just tell you, it was an awesome event, and also, I was interested in fact that the entrance road to that is Farah Parkway. I don't know if y'all know the story of Farah Parkway?
Yes, sir.
Farah Parkway named after Billy Farah, who was a Darlington County resident who left college, went into World War Two, went to pilot training. He then flew plane number fourteen or sixteen, whichever was the last plane, off of the aircraft carrier Jimmy Doolittle, flew over Tokyo, dropped bombs. Then, because he was the last, and was, they were far, too far away, he had to try to get to China. He did make it to China, but he crashed, he was taken into custody by the Japanese in April of nineteen forty-two, and October fifteenth of nineteen forty-two, he and one other fellow were executed by the Japanese. So when you drive down Farah Parkway in Myrtle Beach, please remember that that guy gave his life in this country some seventy-six years ago, almost now, I just want to share that with you all, so that when you go back to Myrtle Beach, you can say there's a reason that Parkway is named now.
And the, the interesting part on the execution, he was not scheduled to be executed, he was not scheduled to, he was going to be prisoner transferred, one of the Royal Japanese officers was beaten, then listed man to death, and he dared put his hands on him to stop it, which sealed the, which sealed his fate right there.
Well, I appreciate you bringing that up. That story and those photographs, photographs of him are in the FBO in Myrtle Beach, the building there, so proud of him.
And what buildings, uh, do you look at?
It's the main, it's on the general aviation side of the new FBO.
Okay.
You walk right in there, it's on that hallway of photographs.
Down the arrow, drive, whatever.
Yeah, you have an opposite side of the world.
Yeah, I understand, it was, you know, it was a wonderful experience, I, I had to comment, I told my wife, I said, y'all appreciate this, they had to keep stopping it, because I saw more Spirit Airlines take off the time that they had, and so I said, you know, they could run that through, run that thing in Florence, it wouldn't have stopped it all.
That's right. You've got to take it over Spirit, eh?
Yeah, thank y'all.
One of your finest, Charlie Bliss, you know, Charlie Bliss?
I'm Charlie, dog's go.
Charlie's in Myrtle Beach, and he's a great friend of mine, and he's a, he's a darling to God, so.
Tell him his teacher said the word.
Oh, yeah, thanks. Thank you all for your time.
Two other quick things, and I'll mention, while you were displaced up here tonight, unfortunately, about two weeks ago this past Friday, there was a rather bad leak out of the Courthouse NA facility, and thank goodness, as y'all know, EMS uses the back part of the building for cords, the cane pack were called Saturday afternoon. It thought the ice machine was spilling water, they dried it up, and it kept coming, and it kept coming, and they noticed it coming out from one of the walls, one of the restrooms, in the men's restroom of the lavatory, it broke, and it ran for at least a day, too much of the water, the magistrate saw some, two insurance order in your council room. It hasn't been an unoccupied building, but another thirty-six hour rather than that, so part of that building is tore out now to the bottoms, and I think it's about dry, they're assessing on what insurance we pay for when they open it. I will mention briefly, very briefly, Councilman Kilgo asking to speak about the opportunities zones, well, we intend to get some detailed information from the Department of Commerce, they're not ready to tell us exactly what those opportunities zones would mean, but if you're not aware, Senators Scott?
Yes.
Tagged something only to the federal budget and, for one point five million dollars?
Is that right?
From anybody, for economic development and stimulus packages throughout the nation, and they were looking for zones of opportunity. Well, the municipalities within the county and the county cannot submit the same location, Marshall contacted us and stated they'd like to submit the new park, industrial park area, so they submitted that, and then we submitted the current I-20 industrial park. And from our understanding, though, we've gotten no official word on paper, we've been notified that both of those industrial park areas were designated as opportunities zones. What that means and what the senators will come, we got to wait on the Department of Commerce to work with detail about, but as soon as we know, hopefully, that would entice someone more likely to want to invest in one of those locations. That's all I have for reminding you, you have specific questions?
Yes, sir.
Questions, comments, give it.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, last week, I attended an actual associate county meeting in Charleston, dealing with jails and overcrowding and dockets and how to move cases in expedited ways so that we don't have so many pre-trial individuals in our county jails. Charleston County has developed a committee, which includes everybody, I, I, I'm a big county, but they got a lot of people on that committee, but I would, I've not had a chance to give that information to the administrator yet, we'll have a copy of every document he would like to share, on what we can do to try to do some things, so. One of them was what they call a stop and release, where if you've got somebody that's charged simple possession of marijuana, and you give them a blue ticket, you don't go haul them off to jail, and let them sit there for a month before they go before the magistrate. My understanding, that's what we do in Darlington now, that makes a drastic difference in jail population, just that one charge of possession of marijuana.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, I've talked about this in the budget workshop, and since the budget is, seems to be willing and, I move to begin the transition to end Darlington County's cowl in vague labor.
Second motion. Let me discuss. All the vagues, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Vales?
We need to clarify that vote.
Well, I say it was voted, them two voted no, press voting to keep it, or the prison call.
We had a motion to make a transition, and Mr. Kilgo and Mr. Flower voted to approve the transition process, all other council members voted against the transition process. Is that, is that right to the record?
Right.
She can get it on the record.
Anything else to say?
No.
Uh, yeah, I said, what I said earlier, I think we need to be really cautious in how we deal with the committees that we hold, and how we ask them to use their time and their efforts and their diligence, and then tell them to go against what they, what they ask unless it's obvious, this, this combination's tax thing. That's all we have.
Well, I appreciate everyone coming, good to meet, have the time out of your day, I appreciate you, appreciate our staff coming, and that's all I have.